I didn't forget about it. I have to say that, given that one just pulled out, I tell that I, in my mind, kind of de-prioritized these meetings to just in fear of you guys. But it's just, you know.
You know what I'm saying?
I know you do. I know you do. I'm not sure everybody else did.
I should've said something when I saw you were just doing the marketing.
I, you know, I just, I'm not making excuses, I'm just saying, I blew it. I know it was a waste of one time for you guys, so.
That's fine.
All right. Um, it's past, sorry. Call to order, the proposed FY18 public meeting regarding the budget, regarding the proposed FY18 budget. And I believe that the primary presenter of this is going to be Mr. Mahoney. So, Mr. Mahoney, after that extra two days of practice, I expect a hot, nice presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It puts the pressure right on, see what you can do here. All right, good evening. I just want to give you a brief overview on the FY18 budget proposal. You received the budget book electronically with your packet last Friday, and those were very able to attend Tuesday, and also received a high copy of the budget book. We'll start out by going to our guiding values, the things that we, that we believe we need to do to create success, and that's promoting excellent teaching, that supports learning, practicing our PLCs, professional learning communities. Montre, you've heard before, finding the right student for the right reason, for the right program, and providing excellent learning environments, as well as achieving purposeful career and college results. As far as our school-wide goals concerned, we've listed these five, mostly as we talked about PLCs, enhancing diversity in all of our students, provide executive function, deeply integrate vocational, career vocational technical education with academics, as you know from the academy model that we're working towards, and promoting the use of technology to enhance teaching and learning. What we're proposing this evening in our overall budget, we're looking at a decrease of about $278,000 from fiscal 17, which is a reduction of about 1.4%. Total assessments are increasing by about $605,000. Some of the achievements that we reflect upon as we go through FY17 was the approval for the new school building project, improvement in our NCAS scores up to a level-one status, where we saw improvement in all disciplines and the subgroups, and a very strong bond rating and a very strong audit report. In terms of the NCAS results, you see our first try-pass rates in the English, math, biology, and chemistry. And when we talk about some of the district's challenges, when we look through, when we started this process back in September, we put together this budget based on our transition to a 10-member district, and as a result of that, we saw some revenue changes that impact, that impacted our decision-making going forward. With less students with the six, departing towns, the chapter 78 will follow those students to their residing towns, therefore we'll see a reduction due to the smaller district. We're seeing a decline in our out-of-district tuition based on lower enrollments in part due to the new DESI regulations. And these revenue changes are subject to change based on the final state budget. The governor usually issues his state budget the last week of January, so there are some assumptions on the revenue side that are based upon best estimates that we have in conversations with DESI and some of our own, and some of our own projections. So, I think that as we move forward, we've had discussions with the offices, as well as the funding subcommittee, about perhaps moving this public hearing to maybe the first week of February next year and going forward, so that if, once we have at least a governor's version of the budget, we'll be able to incorporate the chapter 70 money, some of the combined effort numbers that are required for the capital assessment formula. That'll take some of the, some of the unknowns out of the budget process, but that'll be a conversation that we'll have going through next year. And speaking of next year, also, it's important to note that transportation reimbursement will likely decline about $300,000 going into fiscal 19, because the reimbursement program is based, of course, on expenses that we incur this year get reimbursed next year, and so as we go to a 16-member town to a 10-member town and our transportation system, it contracts, we will see less of a reimbursement in fiscal 19, so that's something that we just need to keep our eye on moving forward. When we started this process, the guidelines we used were trying to no net increase in our spending, and to level fund our supplies and services, as we saw fit. And in looking at the capital equipment, we looked at it not just for next year, but basically from where we started to where, when we will occupy the building, the new school building. We recognize that, given the formula that MSBA employs for furniture fixtures and equipment based on traditional academic high schools, that that formula and the amount that's provided in the project budget will not be sufficient to completely outfit the new school, so what we've been doing is planning now, trying to take advantage of available resources, whether they be in the fiscal 17, 18, 19 budgets, and as well as grant opportunities, looking at private sources, our industry partners, to try and close that gap between what the project can support and what the actual needs. We were working closely with the design team to understand and identify those, so that we can accurately project those going over, over the next three or four years. That is something we were mindful as we were moving this project forward. Within the budget, we provided for a year-one debt service. We recognize that we have students here that will continue their education, graduate from this building over the next three years, so we have to be mindful of that. We have to be diligent maintaining a healthy and safe learning environment. We're going to continue our efforts towards the academy model, reconfigure the bus transportation system, and we're going to continue to fund, we hope, at $50,000 a year, and fund $100,000 in the stabilization account. Again, the overall budget, $19,449,466, that's a decline, and as you can see by the chat, we've, we've tried on that by reducing the budget as we've committed to do as we move forward, preparing the organization to move forward into the, into the new school. So, in terms of, in terms of the revenue plan, as I mentioned, is about a $133,000 long decrease in our chapter 70 state aid, regional transportation relatively flat based on a 60% reimbursement. The decrease in the prior year tuition is, it's down about $517,000. As I mentioned, we mentioned in previous reports, we're unable to process about 140 applications that we actually received due to the change in the, in the regulations for non-member students in their pre-exploratory. Will we still making efforts to see if there will still be interest from some of those students as they complete their exploratory in their current school, vocational school? But again, it was, it was an impact that we've had to, had to address this year. We're committing about $600,000 in our E&amp;D account to it as a funding source. On the program changes, our scheduled closure of marketing will take effect in fiscal 18, telecommunications in fiscal 19. We also funded the two new programs, advanced manufacturing. We did have funding for a 2.5 FTE in this budget. We've increased that to a full FTE, and we've also provided adequate supplies, toolings, equipment to accommodate that shop. As you know, we received a $500,000 grant in order to equip it with the advanced manufacturing machines that are there now. We renovated that whole area, and it looks very state-of-the-art. We're very excited about getting that program online. As for multi-meteor engineering, we've increased the staffing to a 2.5 FTE, so we can bring that program on midway through next year, and we'll provide us additional supplies, materials for that as well. On the considerations, as I mentioned, we're going to see a reduction of about $283,000 as we cut back three and a half bus routes, and we provided about $670,000 for both feasibility paydowns on those bond anticipation notes, as well as first-year design construction financing. We've also level funded our building repairs to do repairs on an as-needed basis, about $40,000. Fixed costs, we level funded our, pretty much our health insurance. We do expect a 5% increase in our costs, however, our subscribers have declined, so the net is about a level funding. We'll probably make it a little bit more headway as, as the actual enrollments come in and the actual rate increases is determined. We'll know that next month at our health trust meeting. Retirement system, the, there's an increase of $15,000 as imposed by the state retirement system. Our utilities, we decreased by $15,000, and we'll continue to allocate 10% of those costs into the revolving fund as we establish this fiscal year. In staffing, we're going to see an overall reduction of about three full-time equivalent positions, one and a half in the administrative side, one and a half in that future staff. In terms of our overall enrollment, this chat distinguishes those 10-member towns in the yellow, you'll see those towns that are withdrawing effective July 1st, and then in the, like, green, the non-member towns, as you can see that we have a trend up in our member towns compared to last fiscal year, and we see the decline in the non-member enrollment. When we look at a 10-year freshman enrollment, as you can see over the last couple of years, we've seen an increase in our freshman enrollment in, as of October 1, 16, with a decrease in nonmember. That's a trend that we need to continue moving forward. So, as we consider enrollment, we see showcase is one of the major events that we have as part of our recruitment and program, and as you can see, we've had more visitors this year than we did last year at this time. It's a bit too early in January to really benchmark how, how we can anticipate applications going forward, just coming off of, off of the holiday. There are a number of events that, that ramp up as it relates to our enrollment, but at least this is an indicator that, that some of our efforts of getting students into the building and seeing what we do is impactful. I think in prior reports, George Clement has indicated that if you, if the student comes for three different events, it's more than likely that an application will follow as well, so we're encouraged when we see more students come and see what we have to offer here in the building. So, when it comes to our enrollment, in summary, we're going to continue to utilize the guided strategies. The events that we, that we have are related to recruitment and our social media and advertising strategies, and we're doing that a little bit more independent now. We're reducing some of the funding dependency on our, on our professional development, because I think some of the, some of the processes and procedures we are starting to do ourselves, and we're designing some of those as we go through the experiences of each of these programs. This is the second full year that we've been doing it, and I know that we've been learning a lot as we go. But we, we, you know, the administration will continue to engage those communities that have expressed some interest in joining the district, and, you know, we still maintain the goal that it's going to be about perhaps three to five years before we're able to achieve that 100% enrollment. We're going to keep working on that. Just in summary, as I mentioned, the revenue plan, it's, it is in your book, but in summary, as I mentioned, we're looking at a decrease of $278,000 on the revenue side, the main driver being the prior year tuition. The E&amp;D has yet to be certified, but I feel reasonably comfortable that $600,000 will be, will be the minimum that will be certified in order that we can commit that. Again, these may change as the governor's budget comes out. And then on the, you know, on the expense side, by function code, as you can see, we have a reduction in our administrative costs, a reduction in our student services costs primarily due to the transportation, and in some other miscellaneous costs in operations and maintenance.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the presentation.
Good. Mr. Mahoney, would you please accept questions from our guests, our visitors today, and if a visitor would like to make a comment, raise your hand. You'll be chosen by Mr. Mahoney, that just come up to the microphone and state your name and your community, and then ask away. If any questions, please start raising your hand. It must have been a very complete presentation.
Two extra days' help.
Was that, two extra days' help? So then, what I'm going to do now then, since we cannot legally start our meeting until 7 o'clock, is that if the school committee members would start to ask, like, start to ask their questions about the budget, perhaps we can make use of that time now. I don't think we can start our regular meeting until now. So, are there questions by members of the school committee relating to the budget presentation that we received today? Ms. Flood.
This isn't really a question about the budget, because having been on the finance subcommittee, lived through a couple of years of this, and had lots of opportunity to ask questions about the subject matter. But the question I wrote down is, Kevin, you showed a slide about the showcase days and the number of visitors being so much higher than last year. I just, my question is, does the number of visitors represent the number of students? Or is that the number of people who came through the door, so it's counting accounts as well? I'm just trying to look at that compared to the number of applications that we've had the last couple of years.
My understanding, that's students.
That's, that's.
That's students.
That's students, thank you.
Any further questions? Ms. Littlecraft.
It's not actually a question, but, not actually a question, but I would like to comment this floor. The first try-pass rate in NCAS, which, I would like to know.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Perkins.
Kevin, can you explain what that question I put in the email a couple weeks ago about how grants relate to the budget? Maybe this is the time to do that.
Certainly. We are, we are very active and aggressive in trying to seek funding on competitive grants. We do provide some supplemental information in the budget book that summarizes some of our federal, state grants and private grants, if you will. We do commit a number of our special education grants to some staffing needs, Title I to some staffing needs. Perkins, we've made an effort to move away from funding folks out of that grant, and focusing the expenditures more on the equipment needs, as well as some professional development. So, I think what we, we do try and maximize the grant opportunities, in fact, those grant opportunities in some of our decisions in terms of budgeting. The Perkins example for, is a, is a, is a situation where, where you have personnel in it, you really don't have the opportunity to make capital investment unless you're trying to do it through the district budget, that ends up straining the district budget. But if we're, by using those funds for our capital equipment, it relieves some of the burden off the district budget, and allows us to make those capital acquisitions periodically each year. So, I think it allows us to maximize the use of those grants, and we try and do that to, to complement what we're supporting through the district budget.
Do they reduce the, do the grants reduce the assessments to ten, or are they, like, yielding a little, that it allows us to have extra things outside of the assessment, assessment to ten? Or do the grants literally reduce the assessment?
I think, I think what happens is that, depending on the timing of things as well, but overall, I mean, we know that we're going to receive Perkins funding, we know that the allowable intent for that is, is equipment, so we know that that relieves some of the burden of the district to try and provide for some of that capital, because we can earmark it, and we do that, Michelle Roach handles that, handles that grant, so that when we're looking at our equipment needs, we strategically decide which, which items will be paid for our Perkins, and then which items will be paid for out of the district.
Okay, so it doesn't really appear in the budget, though?
It's outside of the budget. It's separate, it's separate funding.
So, it might, it might be interesting, I think Michelle spelled it out, I'm not sure about this year, the year before, spelled it out, wrote the money. It might be, it might be worth interesting to see that in the budget book, or, or to describe the route you're taking, the grants, and how we purchase that.
Perhaps we could put some more detail that'll give some insight as to what we are buying.
But you could explain that, I have a much better understanding of that, thank you.
Kevin, there are a number of grants that we're looking at that tonight, we're anticipating the school committee to accept a grant for our STEM equipment, biotechnology. We talked a little bit, a little early about the $500,000 grant for advanced manufacturing. Steve Sherk has done a great job pursuing available grants, and to the extent we can take advantage of those, will assist us in our three-year vision of trying to meet the needs, the capital needs going into the building.
That's right, Jim.
Sure, sure, this, this is a first question, maybe, for, for, for you or Kevin, rather than Kevin, but question about, I'm just curious about how, how is, how are funds taken out of the stabilization fund? Are there any restrictions on it, or process?
I would rely on Kevin to, to, to validate a draw, but the stabilization fund, what was created was voted by all of our river communities for a specific purpose, and the finance subcommittee will be looking at it as we do any other of the financial transactions.
Compared to 50% vote, or, 50% vote, or two-thirds vote?
I believe it's a two-thirds vote.
And then, the second question, I know that virtually all of, all of your revenues are based on enrollment figures that have all already happened, either it was last fall or the previous four years, but I'm just curious, to what extent have you, have you developed a sort of a working forecast of what the mix-up of enrollment is likely to look like in terms of, in terms of next fall? And then, and then, and then that sort of leads into, you know, you've talked about some of the issues that have come up in fiscal 19, 18 as well, but it's a, I mean, there's a multi-year puzzle that you're trying to navigate here.
That's absolutely correct. We're, we've been on a roadmap that we developed and submitted to MSBA back when we were, I think it was module four, when we were projecting what our, what our operating budget will be, and we've been, we've been sticking to that roadmap as guidance as we've been making decisions on these budgets. We work very closely with the input we get from the admissions office as to where they see applications, and we try and translate those applications into acceptances to try and incorporate those decisions. However, once the FY18 budget is adopted, we're already working on fiscal 19. I mean, that's the reason why I wanted to point out that regional transportation. We'll be talking a little bit later this evening with an update on the building project that'll also raise awareness as to why we're starting to talk about fiscal 19 now, because I think our, the way the project is moving along, it's, it's going to require some three-year planning rather than one-year planning.
Chair.
It was very clear that that's the way the administration has been thinking in their questioning in term of the discussions, because when we had our first subcommittee, had its first meeting on the budget this year, and there were representatives from various departments in the administration and education, they were, they were talking about things in the, in the long-term, not just what can we squeeze out of something next year, but where are we coming from, where are we going, what does it mean in terms of the new building and the, and the shift in the program makeup? Really, there's some programs that are closing, there are others that are on a path to adapt to what can't be fully realized until you're in the new building, but they're taking important steps now, and a lot of the equipment that Kevin is talking about are, are working towards that future. So, it's not a, it's not a hard line between this year and next year and the year after that, it's looking at the course of several years out. And it, and that addresses the needs of students who aren't here for one year at a time. They're hopefully here for four years and, and to get the education that they expected and the preparation for, like, after high school.
Yes, thanks. Kevin, let me verify before, thank you very much. You indicated roughly that it was 1.4% decline in the budget.
Correct, yes.
Could you translate that into the impact on the per pupil cost of this one year?
I would think that we're not going to see much of a change, because we also have the decline in enrollment that, that may impact that, the overall decline in enrollment. I'm expecting a slight, slight decrease, but I can look at it a little more closely every quarter back then.
Okay, you're expecting a per pupil cost to decline?
Slightly, not much, because you're going to see a decline in your enrollment as well, so you really would need to see an increase in enrollment and decrease in your costs.
Right, I understand. In fact, I mean, you've got a decrease in enrollment because of roughly 52 withdrawing students.
Right.
But you also have a somewhat decrease, as I read it, in the non-member towns, is that right?
That's correct.
So, you've got probably a 100-student decrease?
669 to 618, or is it 50? 668 to 618.
That's right.
Okay, so 50s was the decrease.
Right.
Okay, so.
With a lot of that occurring in the freshman class.
That's it, all right. So, it's, I don't know, about an eight or nine percent decrease in enrollment, roughly?
Perhaps, yes.
A 1.4% decrease in the budget.
Right.
So, how did that result in a decrease in the first?
We're going to have to take a look at it. I don't have the number off the top of my head.
Just, just to follow up on that, I mean, the, the actual dollar drop in budget is in the 140,000 range, is that right, 180? Whereas the?
274.
Or is it 2, 274, and 978? And that's, and then, and then what is the drop in the transportation cost itself with the three and a half buses? That's, that's at the same, that's at the same, mag, mag, two, right?
Right, about 280.
Yeah, so, so it's, so it's really, and it's, you know, the, to some extent, some of those transportation costs that are, that are dropping off our budget are being picked up by the town and school, either.
Right.
In, in, in sort of our, you know, the cost of gasoline and burning and stuff.
I think the other piece of it, too, is we're seeing an increase in our debt service by about $670,000, and with DESI factors in your per pupil costs, that doesn't count in your per pupil cost, so I see that, that might contribute to it as well, that will contribute to it.
And I would now, since it is approaching 7 o'clock, I would care to have a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
So will.
That was second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion on the table, please raise your hand. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. I think clear of the public meeting adjourned.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, could I?
Certainly.
Like to thank the staff and the superintendent's executive team for their assistance in putting this budget together. Like to thank the staff and the superintendent's executive team for their assistance in putting this budget together. I'd also like to thank the finance subcommittee worked very hard on this during December and January to bring this recommendation forward and I really appreciate their help and guidance as we were able to bring this to you this evening.
Let me just point out that the lack of controversy on the budget says a lot about the work that was put into it. That's my historical knowledge from doing this for a long time.
And I know that you all didn't get everything you asked for and I feel your pain.
Very good. I call to order the, what is it? Ah, yes, January 19th meeting of the.
Keep watching this guy.
We currently have 59.03%
No surprises.
Of the total weighted vote present tonight. As you can see, Arlington takes a big hit. If nobody comes or goes for a standard vote, we need 29.52% to pass. But the important implication here is that we do not have two-thirds or 66.7% of the total weighted vote in the committee, notwithstanding who's here. So we cannot act on the budget tonight. We will have to have a special meeting tomorrow for that.
Yes, Alice.
Um, just, yeah, if I can add this comment, if we can, if we can have the same type of problem, somebody should notify the department that if they have the other district of revision or revision, the problem of getting a form in the name of the grants is a, is a problem for, it's a problem for us and we shouldn't take it lightly. We should allow them.
I see no student personnel report. Is that correct? She is not here. Very good then. Our school building committee report. Mr. Scott.
Um, I'd like to ask my design team to have a seat at the table. So perhaps we could have a couple of seats up front.
You would have to move aside?
Yeah, if you could, and so they could sit up here and I'd ask Joanna and Walter and Tripp and Mary Ann to come up because they're going to help me with this presentation.
Do you want to stall me down?
Yeah, I know too. So all I need is four seats. I got one, two, three, four.
Leave down?
We don't need this many.
No. No, I need you up front. I need you up.
I did have a root connection to this floor.
Just before I begin, I want to just introduce everybody and we'll have further introductions. But Joanna Cripp is on my far right and she is a senior project executive for Gilbane. Mary Ann Williams, you know, our owners' project manager, which is Scanska. Walter Kincaid is standing up and he's going to be giving us a presentation. He's our project executive from Gilbane and Tripp McElroy is the project manager. So we definitely have three project managers at different levels, which is good then. Let me just start and say that the design team is continuing to work on the design development of the buildings. And the committee, you receive in your pocket a listing of all the meetings we've had since approval. And just today, I think, believe there were two other meetings that took place. So this is a continuing process that involves the design team, construction team and the administration. The goal is to have pretty much not everything finalized, but have our next rendition of the design done by the end of the month. In which case we go out and get two estimates to see where we are. And then those estimates, we're going to have to come to final conclusion to make sure we're on budget or under budget either way. So that process will be, it will happen in the year, a couple of weeks in February. The team continues to involve the administration, owners' project manager, building committee, students, Minuteman staff. The amount of time that the Minuteman staff has put into this project is absolutely phenomenal and just as. We, they had two all-day meetings where teams would come in, for example, automotive would come in and they'd go through their space. They're taking a look at all the equipment that they have, the equipment they need, the equipment that's going to fit in the new education program. So that work is intense and it's going on. There was a meeting today, for example, in Greenhouse and the design of that. That meeting will continue as each element of the building is taken, taken a look at. So the design includes the building exterior, education, all spaces, furniture, outbuildings and the campus. We have retained the public archaeology laboratory pal of Rhode Island. They've been retained to work with us on a survey of the property to see if there are artifacts located on this property that need to be projected or preserved. We need to know that before we start taking down a lot of trees and digging a foundation hole. So that work is being done. I want to commend the superintendent in particular for this. He's taking this very, very seriously. We're working with the National Park Service in this effort. They've been fully involved. So this is an important effort that we're, we're doing and we're doing that upfront. We started discussions with Lincoln and Lexington on the permitting process. That's just beginning. We also are in this conversation with Haskins because they are involved in terms of when we look at a fly loft and put that up. So those processes are all started and beginning. So what I want to do now is turn to Mary Ann and ask her to talk about our selection of Gilbane and the process and how we end up where we are.
Okay, great.
Good evening. Just wanted to talk to you about how we arrived at this point in time with Gilbane and hopefully being able to execute a contract with them this week. What we did is we started our process following the public procurement process of advertising the project. We had thirteen firms request what they call the RFP, or request for qualifications. We had eleven firms submit and we had ten that were pre-qualified, as being qualified to do the project. Then the follow-up to that process was we, we met on-site. We gave the construction managers a tour of the building, a tour of the site and tried to provide as much information as possible to, we made available to them schematic drawings and all of the information that was submitted to the Masculine Building Authority. So that as they put their proposals together, in response to the request for proposals, that they were able to have a pretty good idea about what the project was, where we were going, the schedule, the scope and, and the timeline really of when we were hoping to move through each of the phases and what their involvement would be in terms of pre-construction and construction services. So we did end up receiving five responses to the, how to, I'm sorry. Yes, we received five responses to the RFP. There were several firms that appropriately so self-selected themselves out either because of the scale of the project or perhaps they didn't have experience with vocational schools and Chapter 74 programs and a project of this scale and sophistication. We were very pleased that we had Consigly, Divio, Gilbane, Shawna and W.T. Rich with the joint venture all submit. So when we received the proposals, we looked at the technical aspect of the proposals. We looked at schedules that were being proposed. We looked at the staffing, the, the experience of the staff with a project of the size and scope. And we were able to really ascertain that all of those firms that had submitted were qualified to come to the next step for an interview. On December 10th, we spent a full day in this room interviewing firms. We had, we spent approximately an hour and a half with each firm, leaving time at the end for Q and A. All of the firms were very impressive, but I want to say that in our mind Gilbane stood out as the most advantageous firm for us to be, to make a recommendation to the school building committee to commence negotiations with them. After all the interviews were over, the subcommittee took their, their tasks very seriously here where we, we discussed all of the firms, the merits, the pros and cons for a good hour and a half, almost hour and 45 minutes. So it wasn't arbitrary. It wasn't a decision that we just arrived at. Immediately, we really thought about what everyone talked about in the firm, about each of the firms. And so I think what really helped us with Gilbane was their experience. We have a very seasoned team here. We have a proven team who have worked on a number of projects of this scale worth of $100 million for construction, that they had career in technical, Chapter 74 experience. They worked on Essex, Aggie, Quincy, a number of other projects. And it's, it was a team that we were familiar with it because Scanska has worked with Gilbane successfully on a number of projects including Blueford High School and I think the middle high school as well as currently working with them on another vocational school. And so we felt as though that we had a strong team, a reliable team. And we struck by their description of what they thought they could do. They put together a 17-page construction schedule and we looked at that as a matrix against all the different milestones. And we thought that they presented a very credible argument about how if we made some changes they could get us into the building sooner than what we showed in our schedule. So they demonstrated that there was a lot of creative thinking, that they went through the drawings, they understood the building. They talked about how we could streamline certain things in the design that not changing it structurally, functionally, but changing how we did it and how it would allow them to perform at an accelerated pace. And, and I think the argument was credible enough that we thought that's the firm we should begin our conversations with.
So this evening, we're going to ask you to vote for or on a contract with Gilbane. Before I do that, I'd ask Walter to lead your team and Dr. Wish, you received in your pocket this and that's really where he's going to be working from, but if you could talk about Gilbane and your strengths and add to what Mary Ann.
Sure. So I have to start off the same. We're really excited to be part of this team. We're kind of the last ones brought on board. You know, you've had a long road. And I just want to say, in two and a half years, we hope to put you, we're confident we're going to put you on the new school. Again, we're really grateful and excited to be here. We're just going to run through some of our, these are excerpts from our presentation. Tell you a little bit about Gilbane, focus on our team and then give you a little idea of how the sequence and what the site might look like as we, or will look like as we proceed. So Mary Ann mentioned, we build a lot of schools. We're a national company. We're a leader in the K-12 in the nation. Locally, we build a lot of schools. Locally, we build, we deliver a lot of projects in the over $100 million range. So this is just an excerpt from, from our slideshow, but you can see Essex North on here, 113. Quincy, which I was involved with, some of not school project, but larger projects in Worcester. All delivered in the DCEM at-risk delivery method. All delivered successfully. So, so our team, our team is a core from Winter, which Mary Ann mentioned, the three of us standing here. My name's Walter Kincaid and I'm, my role is really onsite project manager. I'll be, you know, from this day to the very last day of the project, I'll be involved in making sure things are running well. I've been with Gilbane 17 years now. I've done a Quincy school, I've done Winter, I've done another school in Shrewsbury. And I've asked Joanna and I did a home courthouse quite a few years ago. I had Tripp interview herself.
So Tripp McElroy, onsite project manager. I'll be, you know, overseeing this, our superintendents and working with our engineering staff closely and, and having a really strong relationship, working relationship with council leaders throughout the entire project. I've been with Gilbane 10 years this September. This will be my fourth public middle or high school project, my second vocational high school. So really excited to get Walter through and get this one going with you guys.
Well, I'm Joanna Cripp. I've been with Gilbane since 1982, so thirty-plus years of construction. So most of my experience has been in the public sector and in the K-12. The way we sort of align our group and I'll kind of go through our reasons like quickly is, you know, Tripp is our, Walter is our onsite leader and has been in charge of what happens daily in the field. Tripp is our project manager and he really works closely and especially pre-con with the architects to make sure that what's on the paper, what's on the drawings is constructable, that we, we put together the documents, we put out to bid, we get complete bids and when we get completed bids, we minimize chain orders. Our general in the field is John Roach, alright? So John really relies on this relationship to make sure that when it gets passed off to John in the field, the documents are correct, the, the foreman, the trades know what they need to build. And he really is what we call the field marshal out there. He makes sure that the troops, you know, are totally aligned and get it filled.
Just mentioned, John wanted to be here tonight. He couldn't, but he shares and is excited. His sister went to school here. So he's really, he's really excited. He lives in the area and he's really, really excited to be part of this project.
His sister's really excited for this.
And he's now working at Fenway and doing a project there, so adding more seats.
That we can afford.
No tickets.
Oliver Cowie, he hasn't come down to our presentation yet, but Oliver is an MEP superintendent. He worked with me out at North Reading and he came up, he came on and he was going to be the BDC engineer, virtual designer. And he started talking to me and he sounded, seemed relatively great and I said, Oliver, would you like to be, take this virtual design and construction and become, take it from the virtual world out into the field? So he's actually our MEP superintendent, but he also does all of the coordination and the model. So that he lives it from the model all the way through the construction, through the commissioning and facilities. And he really is going to be integral, working with your facilities group to make sure that when the building comes online, it's operational.
He's part of our Winter team as well.
And so he was on Winter, so this will be his third school right now in the field. He really understands how it operates. Alil, Alil's been to the meetings. He's a, he's part of our procurement department. He helps us to make sure that the equipment that all the teachers have been talking about is coordinated, procured properly. The greenhouses and the lifts, so really especially is the integration of the procurement of equipment that comes with a VoTEC. Joe McCoy is our estimator and Mark Pritzl is our environmental. He's really one of our differentiators here at Gilbane. He's onsite, he's, he comes onsite when, you know, he helps us with the SWIP. He keeps us out of trouble when we have to talk with agencies with multiple letters like DEP and EPA. And he'll be integral when we start standing up the SWIP for the demolition, for the removal of trees and when we start demolishing the building.
So our recommended schedule, which I hope is turning into our planned schedule soon. This shows us accelerating the turnover of the project by a year. This means putting people in all of 2019. This is a, this is a 250,000 square foot project and that type of volume, this type of team, that's the type of pace that we're really comfortable delivering this project at, so. You know, the big number on that is the savings that comes out of that. When you peel back that time and you compress our time and you move back all the construction of the year. a year earlier, you can save a lot of money by doing that. Now, to us, that just makes the most sense, that money can go toward their programs and their education, and not be paid in inflation and escalation and things of that. So I have a series of images that are kind of walking you through this phase, because we won't spend any time with the bar, we'll kind of talk about each one. This is where we like to be come spring, with the site enabled, this is kind of our logistics, and give you an idea of what the site will look like for the two years roughly during construction. You can see the existing school, you can see the auxiliary road coming in, which we'll use for our main gate. Like I said, this is, you know, we're targeting a June-type of frame, timeframe where we'd start taking the trees down. But just to give you an idea, for us, this is a wow, this is a really good logistics site for us, because most importantly, we're isolated from all the school activity, you can see that there's a road of convenience into there, our construction site, and we're very isolated. We've built a lot of campuses, we're, we're co-mingled, and there's a lot of challenges associated with that, so we definitely had that in our playground, this type completely. We have some abutters, you know, notably the parks to the north, that we're aware of, and we have to be very sensitive to, so, you know, the next upcoming months, we're going to get our hands around all of that and make sure we have a big plan in place. You know, we kind of joked at our presentation about the biggest day on this project would be when the trees come down, and it'll measure the success of the project if we've done our job and make sure that everybody's aware of those expectations, and, you know, that there are no surprises, and that's really our goal, so.
And our meetings, just in our meetings with the neighbors, all of our neighbors, this is going to be taking place within the next week or two, so that process will start.
How's the permitting process going?
We've just started that, and we're going to be working on that in the next couple of weeks, honestly.
We've had meetings with Lincoln and Lexington, with the appropriate folks, we're submitting some preliminary documents on Tuesday to Lincoln. We're trying to get together with the abutters the following day, we're waiting for confirmation. We're also getting together with both Lincoln and Lexington police chiefs, fire chiefs, to review the site plan and make their recommendations, and we're trying to do that from the twenty-fifth next week as well. But we're, you know, those invitations went out today, the notifications.
Don't anticipate any snags or something?
Well, it's a lot of work to keep the communication lines open, certainly my experience in Lincoln and with my neighbors on Mill Street, they have a lot of good questions, you know, one of them was here two nights ago, we answered a lot of her questions, but we want to engage them early and often so that they're fully aware of what's going on. It's really height, lights, and, you know, there's been some rumors about what we're doing, so we want to make sure we get the facts out, because the facts are the best at this point.
Thank you. So spring, summer, focused on getting the site ready. Kind of, I want to transition and chase our foundations, a couple of slides about foundations. We're going to attack the building from both ends, work towards the middle. Our goal here is to get the foundations in all by winter, obviously we don't want to spend a lot of money heating because of, you know, concrete sensitive to winter, so working it into the schedule, we want this done by fall. Winter is our focus on getting steel going, again, following that same sequence where we're working two cranes, working the building, really, it's two separate schools. Coming out, still another winter slide. Coming out in the spring and fall, we're putting the roof on, working on the skin, we're in two thousand eighteen, closing the building, summer, fall, two thousand eighteen. And then, you know, we'll be weather tight at that second winter, and we'll have a good ten months once we're weather tight to finish the interior building, so, you know, it doesn't really show in the slide, but we're obviously working on the inside of the building, and, you know, ten, you know, we use a rule of thumb, with ten months left in construction, once you're weather tight, you can finish it at the inside of the building, so that's kind of it, just the framework for the schedule. Our next slide, once you move in and you move out, we flip the site, we go into a demolition phase, this will be the end of the fall of two thousand nineteen, taking the building down. And then the last slide, we'll probably leap into that spring of two thousand twenty, depending on how much fieldwork has to be done, to do with fieldwork. So it's a year earlier than the proposal schedule, everything's been filled back here, the field and the completion of the building, and we expect to be done by the summer of two thousand twenty out of the place. Answering questions on that, with one last slide, this was a part of our presentation, we wanted to talk about tonight, we build a lot of schools, we all like to build schools, we, we'd like to interact with the kids. A VoTEC school, it's extremely important and extremely exciting, because we're talking about trades, and having workers on site, and we're just really excited about it, so I think it's a really good one.
This was one of the things that spoke to us, we came on a early cycle, we came, the initial walkthrough, we saw this on the wall, and we really were, you said, now this is something that, you know, my passion is, is this, is this slide, and how we can integrate moving forward. Your, your roots feeding in, our academics experience, passion and professional skills, and I think our people give our passion, we've been with Castle Blues and Skanska and the staff here at Minuteman. This bucket is overflowing with passion for this project. What we look at on the experience is how can we help the students with experience and to get them into the job market, and to look at our subcontractors and to have job fairs, you know, to come in a couple of times a year, to say, hey, here's a job fair, and let the students come in, the plumbers, the electricians, they love to share what they do. And we talk about shadow days with trades, so that they'll be able to come out during the process of the job and shadow, the plumbers will be able to shadow the plumbers, electricians, electricians, carpenters, carpenters. So we look at that type of synergy between what's happening out in the field, for that to become a real-life lab in the classroom, and then in the V D C too, the, bringing the model into the classroom. It helps support academics, one of the things we really would like to talk about is this facilities' main management curriculum. We're in the process right now of turning over a lot of the schools, and we turn them over to staff who are big custodians, and there's a real need for everybody to be able to understand how the, the building runs, and what it means to manage a facility with these type of systems. I was actually at one of our jobs, Dearborn Academy, the other day, and they actually have ceiling tiles, they're going to have ceiling tiles that are perforated, so that anybody can look up and see what's above the ceiling, so that that, you know, not hiding things from the students, and turning this school into a learning environment is really where we're heading in the future. And then the professional skills, working with Massachusetts Girls in Trades to try to bring up young ladies and young women in the trades. We actually have, Castle Blues has a Minuteman student who is on their team, we have a young lady who actually came from Lowell Tech to work and is working through, so, to help with that. We have a group inside of Gilbane called Advance. When I started in construction in nineteen seventy-eight, there weren't really, wasn't much of a support system for women in construction. And at Gilbane now, we have an advance group, where our goal is to advance women within Gilbane into the upper-level management positions and into that type of level. So, yeah, this piece really is exciting, and I look forward to working with the staff to see where we can create a synergy that supports the curriculum and the students of Minuteman.
I'm really interested in listening to you talk about that. Does that, but I'm surprised that you can introduce that to the level of the view who are describing it, and it's on right the schedule at the same time? So, I mean, did, how does that relationship work?
The student inclusion?
To distract from the progress.
The student inclusion? Oh, I think it happens automatically, I think there's so much interest and passion that, and you know, I put in the work a little bit, and there's culinary that can feed two hundred men out there, if you want to trace people, I'm sorry, I'm trying to chase people.
Which was just one of the things that did you?
No, I don't, I don't think it's, we don't, we don't see it as.
Eric, you can do both at the same time, I think.
And again, it will be something that will build, it's something that builds when you start with the foundations, and then as the building grows, the opportunities grow, and the relationships will start to build, and we'll start to integrate with the staff, and they'll come to us with a need, and we'll be able to accommodate it. What we, the part that I find exciting about this project is that when we've done this at high schools and middle schools, they're, the constraint on the curriculum time is so tight because of the core curriculum that they're teaching. And here, this is the core curriculum, which is what we're really excited about, to be able to share our passion and get these young men and women excited about the trades, and get our trade contractors excited about this group as a source of employment for them, that this is where you should start coming to look for people that you want to hire, and this is where they are, and this is where I'm really, I think, the most excited about. We need to trace people to build these buildings, and I think that's one of the things I'm mostly excited about.
You know, Ed has brought students into the design process, and sincerely into the design process, I've been, I've presented three or four meetings with students, where you have twenty students sitting around the room and working with a professional up there, and the last meeting was all on the colors, you know, what colors do we want in the walls, what color, what kind of furniture do we want, and the students participated in that, and, you know, it was pretty engaging for a couple of hours. And so they come out of class, and this is part of their class, and then they work on it. I just want to add that, I can't remember her last name, but Courtney, who's from Lexington, graduated from Minuteman two years ago, she's at Wentworth, Wentworth is a five-year program, she wants to go into.
Architectural design.
Architectural design.
I want to get her to construct.
No, you're not. But, you know, she's with Council, and she, you know, she was here for, yesterday, two days ago in the afternoon, she was sitting there with the designers and the teachers and rest of Castle Blues staff, going through the design plans, and I was absolutely blown away with her knowledge of the design and, you know, things that she was pointing out. And she was sitting there with people she knew, you know, Michelle, she's not here, but Michelle was there, and, you know, she knew Michelle well, she's going through the room, so this is a great learning experience, and Joanna, really excited to be here with you, Joanna, too. Any other questions about, you know, Gilbane?
I do.
Schedule or anything?
So I'm very intrigued by the savings of the year, and is there any truth to the rumor that one of the reasons we're going to get the savings is that you're going to issue shovels to all the school community members, with the effect, every major project maybe will?
Day one at least.
Yeah, true. We're not going to use school, we're going to use.
Inclusion, huh? So savings would be much better than school.
Not a handout shovel, we're going to bring this machine.
Is it definitely decided that this building will be torn down? That's definite.
That's where we are now.
So the repurposing would not involve, you know, new construction or something, but not using this building? Okay?
I mean, throughout the campaign last fall, we were always talking about the fall of two thousand twenty, and saving a year, I mean, it really strikes me, you know, it's a good year, so it's a question for you, Paul, you know, is this, is this a hope, or is this?
Does my retirement?
I mean, I mean, is this, is this doable, if it's, only if everything works right, or, or just how much?
I would love to take that, that question. When we put the original schedule together, and we're projecting a couple of years out in time, we were looking at when we thought the project would be approved, and also trying to have the project end at a reasonable time of year. And we, because of, you know, that delay that we had for, you know, it took us to September instead of to April to approve the project, it really extended it, and we were kind of landing at an awkward time of year. And so, you know, we reviewed the schedule, we reviewed it with the design team, we thought, you know, we could accelerate it, but it might be too much of a fire drill, let's, let's get a construction manager on board, and we'll review this. And so one thing we did do is we accelerated the design, because we, we took what was going to be a twelve-month design period, and this is the benefit of going C M at risk, that you're able to actually start construction before you complete the design. And so we started really looking at, you know, what pieces of the design do we need to accelerate in order, so that we didn't have a gap in the schedule? And then, you know, having it, having it finished at a reasonable time of year, so that you're not trying to move in December or January. And so with the feedback that we received from the design team, because once they were given a contract to proceed, they had to go out and hire, you know, thirty-one subconsultants, and then have that conversation about schedule, how soon can I get this? And so, you know, with things falling out of that, that sort of one-hundred-and-twenty-day approval process, we really had to start over again and kind of vet, like, what's possible here? And what, since I put the schedule together, I didn't want to be irresponsible and say, we're just going to shove it down the contractor's throat, you know, is this a, you know, a twenty-four or a twenty-six month schedule? And so what we've been able to do with Gilbane is have the conversation to say, okay, maybe we can start site enabling, go with the foundations, et cetera. Ideally, we would love to start in May, but that's all contingent on planning board approval, but we're all, we're all moving in that direction, because if we're going to get the planning board approval from the town of Lincoln.
That's why I asked.
Yeah, and so then the conversation on the other end was to say to Dr. McCullough, all right, you know, if we can pull it back a year, we have four months, which was a lot, unreasonable, four months for rigging equipment, bringing it over, installing it in the building, commissioning it, making sure it was up and running appropriately. And so what, what we came up with was, well, maybe we're squeezing that process down to two months to make your schedule stop, so we start a little early, go early with the planning board, we, you know, we will finish enough of the building that perhaps the school can start before the construction is complete, moving some of that equipment over, and maybe, you know, in two months, get fifty percent of the equipment over. And then on the other end of it, be willing to say, you know, we're willing to live with getting in the school a year earlier, understanding that there's going to be punchlers, there's going to be commissioning, and we're going to be bringing the other fifty percent of the equipment over. So it's, it's an experiment, we're all sort of saying, yeah, if we're willing, if we're willing, we think we can do that. What does that mean to the project? It means that with this type of schedule, we are, we're running like hell to really get this in place, and sorry, this one, we're running crazy, really moving this along in a very thoughtful way. And, and so is it going to line up perfectly? No, but it's going to be far enough and good enough that if we can save three percent on escalation and, and, you know, some of those things, and we're reducing it, I mean, that's millions of dollars. Our goal is, and it's been our goal since day one, simplify the lines of the building, the construction manager has been saying, hey, if you get rid of masonry bearing walls, and we do it with steel, and masonry infill walls, maybe that helps us in the winter and schedule, we've been looking at all of those things. So it's been reacting to the design as it's being developed, so we, we believe that this can be accomplished, and whether it's twenty-four or twenty-six months, it almost doesn't matter. The fact is, we achieved the overall goal, which is getting them in the building a year earlier for it. So that's, that's where the savings come from.
It is, it is so key, I mean, both in terms of, I mean, in terms of just the savings from here, in terms of the credibility of the people who think that Minuteman can, can do, I live with those, with those folks, and it's key to the future moment, and it means having temperature to start to keep it moving to it.
Exactly.
There's a lot riding on it, so if there's a roadblock right now... There's a lot riding on it. So if there's a roadblock right now, sort of moving things through the planning board, you know, whatever it takes to get that going is going to have a, a big draw.
We started meeting with the, with the, the planning boards actually back, I want to say planning board and, um, the, the appropriate officials at that point in time, where we started meeting with them in October, asking them about their expectations of us. And so this has been an ongoing process and we've had a lot of help from the discussion.
First of all, it is great news that you, you know, believe we can do this a year early, save six and a half million dollars. Congratulations for, for doing that. This is the first I've heard of this possibility. And so, yes, the question in my mind is, was this knowable over the past year? Or is it knowable that we might be able to do this a year early and save this amount of money?
No, because it was a very unpredictable approval process, legal approvals, when it was going to the sixteen communities and whether the vote was going to pass and they're getting permission from the basketball building authority, can we do this again? And, and so, you know, essentially what I did, it was not knowable whether it would ever pass as a project. So what I did is assuming that we may get a second bite of the apple and the basketball building authority gave us that opportunity. When we exceeded the 120 days, it didn't pass, but they gave us another period of time to try and make it pass. I built that schedule out in time, building these contingencies into that, you know, still not knowing whether it was going to.
Well, remarkable. Let me, let me just add, add to that before you go.
Yeah.
Um, we really didn't know until we sat down with five construction managers and talked to them and listened to them about their schedule, schedules, their ideas, and then we had five to look at. Gilbane had this schedule. They're not the only ones that wanted, said we could move it up. But that was the time when at least the building committee came to the realization, this is a possibility. So once we brought this team in. When was that? Uh, three weeks ago, four weeks ago?
Yeah, because for something, something.
Because we haven't drafted a minute, so.
I mean, part, part of it was, um, that we had to visit with the designer to say, you know, what's the compelling reason we would make modifications to the design, okay, not to the program or anything like that, about, well, if we change certain things here, it allows them to do the installation much more efficiently. Because if we kept the design the way, the way it was, then, no, they, they couldn't promise that schedule if we had masonry bearing.
So it's, it's, it's all good news and, and, you know, again, I greatly appreciate the effort that's made to arrive at that schedule. Uh, I, I can't help but wonder if somehow if we had known that someone earlier, it might have affected perhaps thinking in some of the towns that, uh, that aren't going to be part of the district anymore. I don't know that. I must say we've had an impact in my town, for example.
Just a quick comment.
But just to finish from our, 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 the, it's a significant amount in total cost of the project. And it's, we've been working for quite a period of time under the expectation that, you know, every vote we delay by a month is going to end up costing hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars. And now we find out that in spite of all the delays that we had, not at least which was the fact that it didn't pass in the, in the original vote, that we were going to do it a year early and six and a half million dollars. I'd just say, congratulations and thank you. It's just, you know, if, if we had known that earlier, it might have been helpful.
Just a comment is, is very simple, is that there are lots of unknowns for this kind of project. You move along the project and the unknowns get less. When you are at an earlier stage and you have more unknowns, you're not going to give pie in the sky, optimistic views. You're going to take a conservative stance on what's possible. Now, we have this good news, but I'm not counting my chickens because there are lots of obstacles which could prevent us from realizing that. So even today, if somebody had asked me, how much is the project going to cost in one school and can you guarantee it? I wouldn't say I can guarantee this two years. I'm saying that if everything falls into place and we have a little bit of good luck, then we might get it. I certainly wouldn't, uh, commit to it even now and make that as a promise. And a few months ago, before we got to this stage, uh, we go on the best information that we have. Now, we know that delays are expensive. If you had a delay and it was pushed out a year, then it would have cost the five or six million dollars that we were warned about. In this case, by changes in design, by the competence of the people we were lucky to get, by our flexibility in allowing the changes to be made, there may be an opportunity to go in the other direction. But there's certainly no guarantees here. And, um, we have to move forward in the process. And as I say, remain conservative until you have.
Evidence.
Evidence and the unknowns are reduced.
I appreciate that. It is, it is very gratifying that they were able to accomplish this.
And with that question, I just want to say, make more sense to your point. If we don't get a planning board approval, that opportunity is gone. And I, and you'll be saying, oh, you're right on target. And scheduled in 2020.
I just want to remind people that there are some things that came off the list to be included, that got moved over to a half halt list so we could do it at the 144 million. This gives us perhaps an opportunity to go back and reconsider something that happened. But I'd also like to, I have a question that I'll get to later, but, um, imagine if it had been the other way around. If we had been more aggressive and, and you say, we can do it for 130. And then we're sitting here tonight with the candidate for the CM risk where they say, it's really going to take a lot, you know, a year longer at six and a half million more. Then where will we be?
And furthermore, we don't know what the cost is until they put it out to bid. So.
Which, which absolutely gets me to my, my real question here. Um, is, you talked about actually starting type work in foundations and, and some of the construction before some elements, we weren't specific about a, a design were, were, were finished, is that right? So that you'd be, so you're actually sending out to bid some portions of the job before you tie in all the ends. And I, you guys are the, you guys are the CM and risk. How much risk are you taking on that?
This is what we call early packages. So you see, um, we have a target in here, which I think is basically the end of the next year, end of this year, finish the design a hundred percent. But we carve out some of the, some of the early packages, the steel, the foundations and the site work that allows us to get going. Those are things that aren't going to change a lot as a design gets prior life. But while we're doing that, and it's going to start as soon as next week, we're going to do an estimate on the job. And, um, we're going to do two F, three estimates.
Three estimates.
So we'll have three independent estimates.
Two, two, there'll be two estimates.
Three, done three times.
Yeah, three times.
So as, as the drawings are getting finalized, we're looking for budget certainty the whole time, or measuring risk. It says, okay, it makes sense to carve away a portion of the work and get started. So we won't start steel until we've done at least one or two of those rounds of estimates and know that we're heading.
Alex also has a question.
Bob Dunne, I'm a Lincoln resident, former member of the planning board, just got finished with a 12-year sentence. So maybe I can help a little bit in terms of, of the permitting process and the desire to not have it affect the schedule. I think you've got a major branch point in terms of the design, depending on what you can work within Lincoln's height regulations or whether you're, and incidentally, the planning board can exceed the normal regulation, if not, not to an unlimited extent. They have limited authority to allow additional height beyond the regulations. That's a very expedited process. If you need to invoke the Dover amendment, sorry.
It was just for a Catholic church.
Yeah, if you need to invoke the Dover amendment and go for exemption, uh, that goes beyond the planning board's authority. I think then you're dealing with a longer permitting process. Now, maybe you can put your foundation in anyway, not knowing exactly what you want to protect, so indeed. But in any event, I would encourage the planning staff to, to ask them the reverse question, how high can we go uh, within the planning board's authority and what point we end up having to, uh, vote for Dover amendment, uh, exceeding that authority.
Good question. Yes. Alex.
I just wanted to say that the, um, integration of the facilities management department today is such an excellent, um, thing for this school, which is always been cutting edge school. And it's just one more example of something that we'll be doing that is needed. Um, the facilities management people are not just needed in schools, they're needed all up and down, on 28 and everywhere. And it's something that's been talked about here for like ten years. So it's really exciting to see it happen. And I'm also hoping that you can come back with the, um, some examples of the virtual reality stuff that's going to be saved. I think most of you on school community have not seen that and they would find it really exciting. It's, it's the latest stuff and it's really interesting to see.
We'll, we'll be coming back with that. Once we get through, um, our first estimate, then we'll be able to come back with, with that design work. The building committee meeting, you're all welcome to any building committee meeting this Monday, uh, is our building committee. And we're going to be looking internally at the classroom designs that we're working on, but that's going to be just at the building committee. But it's five o'clock Monday and you're certainly welcome.
Before, would you like to make a motion?
Not yet. Let's see if there are any.
They can have the questions.
Just to follow up, to follow up, to speed this into the admissions process. And I think, you know, I've always been thinking that students wouldn't want to be during construction side of it, but it could be a very positive. And if, and if, and if we can actively promote coming here.
Jim, thank you. I couldn't agree more. This is a major opportunity for our people in the admissions process to use this as a learning experience. What I'd like to do, if there are no other questions, is turn to approving the contract. What I'd like to do is make a motion on the contract and then answer any questions that you may have about the contract. I know you all received it in advance. So if you have any questions about that, Mary Ann and Joanna Walter will be here to answer questions. The good part is the team has all agreed, uh, on the contract. So that's where we are. The building committee has recommended unanimously that we approve the contract, or they recommend to you. I recommend the motion to the chairman, that the school committee approve the award of a contract with Gilbane Building Company, A. Gilbane, to act as construction manager at risk in connection with the replacement of the existing high school building through construction of a new, uh, school facility and related work projects. Such contracts would be substantially informed, presented to this meeting, with such revisions as may be approved by the chair of the school building committee contract.
Is there a second? Very good. So for a quick question for it before we open to discussion. And the question is, has this con, this is the contract that has been approved by the building committee? And has this contract been looked over by our attorneys?
It has not only been looked over by our attorneys, it's been looked over by Gilbane's attorney. So, uh, the answer is yes.
Yes, okay. Therefore, is there any questions on the motion on the table? Seeing none, we bring it to the vote. All in favor of the motion on the table, please raise your hand. It passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's exciting.
Now, who would you like to make another motion?
I'd like to make another motion. And the purpose of this motion, before I make it, just so you know, is, is really a clarification motion. It's a clarification to make sure that you know, and the building committee knows, exactly what the role of the building committee is at this stage of the game. Um, and it's also, so why don't I make that motion and that we can discuss it? To authorize the school building committee to act on behalf of the district and the school committee in connection with such contract as follows, to make final and binding decisions on behalf of the district with respect to such contracts and any amendments thereto. To enter into, execute and deliver the contract of any amendments thereto at any time, from time to time, and to bind the district to its terms and conditions. In the discretion of the school building committee, to designate one or more of members of the school building committee to sign the contract and any amendments thereto on its behalf, to review and provide approval recommendations to the finance committee regarding invoices, requests for payments and other dispersments with respect to the project and/or pursuant to or related to the contract at any time from time to time with the finance committee, to review and sign warrants related to the project, acting directly on the recommendation of the school building committee and without further authorization from the school committee. To take all actions necessary or related to the administration of the contract and any amendments thereto, and to authorize the school building committee, in its discretion, to delegate one or more individuals acceptable to the school building committee to represent the school building committee and act as contact person for the school building committee with respect to the contract. That is the wording from our attorney.
Do I have a second? So, and that was going to be my question. So the wording of this, um, uh, the wording of this, um, motion came from our attorney. And is this process, as outlined here, or the authority of the building committee, its relationship with the school committee? Is this a process that is fairly common in incidents like this?
It's not only common, it's the general practice of all building committees, uh, in the district and confirm that, at least with our attorney and others. So it's, it's a practice. The reason for it is sort of twofold. You have voted on the three major contracts. We know more major contracts. There may be amendments to this contract, uh, to the contract because what you just voted on is a pre-construction contract. Where then, once we finish pre-construction, we're going to go into the final general contract and that will be the amendment to the pre, um, pre, um, construction contract. Um, secondly, in terms of payments of, of, uh, authorizing payments, we all along have been doing that, but this clarifies it. What we do is the building committee approves the warrants at their meetings, that they typically have been doing every two weeks. Um, then when that's taken, Kevin takes that information to your finance committee, the school building, uh, school committee's finance committee, who then approves also the warrants and then they sign them. So they have the final say and the, and the final signing. But they know by the vote of the bill, the school building committee, that they have approved, approved those. They're submitted by our three, um, members of our team. Um, Kevin sees them first, Mary Ann also sees them and goes through them, and then the recommendations are made to us. This needs to be done on every couple of week basis. School committee, I don't think, wants to meet every two weeks to, uh, go through these processes, plus the fact that we need warrants and sometimes that's more of a difficulty than our school building committee, which is, let me say, they're there. And they, they do a great job. So, um, that's the purpose of it. It's more of a clarification than anything else to a practice that we've been doing.
Good. Any questions to motion on the table?
Yes, sir.
Ma'am.
I've been gone that long? Isn't this sort of a rewriting of what we voted on last month? Because I thought I asked the same, a similar question to what Jackson's asked.
I'm not sure we really voted on it. I think it is a clarification of what we talked about last month. Um, and that's really what it is. It's sort of, is that clarification?
Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, bring the motion to a vote. All in favor of the motion on the table. It passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And at this time, I would like, uh, if there's no objection, to take a brief recess because I have been, signed a few documents to make this legal. So our, our guests can enjoy the rest of the evening. So if there's seen no objection, we call a five attendant recess.
Probably a good one.
I'll leave the transaction in one of the places you guys.
This is, um. Congratulations.
Nice to be on board. Walter, Ed Walter. How do you tie in all of this?
Uh, my wife is on the committee and I, we drive her together.
And where, where do you reside?
Uh, still.
Do you differ?
Yes.
How far is it?
It's near Acton and Hudson. So, you know, inside 495, um, 117.
So it's a little ways away.
Yeah. Twenty-five minutes, no traffic.
Live in, uh, live on Medfield, so that's a fine area for me. So at least putting up positive.
So you, do you understand, you know what's there in terms of shelf or, I mean, whenever we have building in town, there's always a question of what does the ledge look like?
Yeah, I didn't mention the blasting we had to do that summer. We're, um.
I didn't know whether they'd actually tested them.
They've done corn. We have a quantity of stone to be blasted. It actually, we've mitigated a lot of that by trine with some of the elevations, which will help, so. I think the biggest concern is the archaeological survey. I don't know if you hear the mention.
No.
Maybe you hear it. They've hired an archaeological group called PAL that's going to do about eighty, you know, test pits out there, grit it out. They're going to, not grit it out, but like sniff it out where something might be active.
Okay.
They really want it, you know, they've written a report, they think there might be some active Indian activity or something like that.
Okay. Pre-revolutionary work.
Yeah, so interesting. So that's, that's kind of a curve ball right now. We're anxious to get it. I think we're losing our, we can do it right now, they're waiting on a permit, but I feel like the day the permit comes, it's going to freeze, and we're going to dump a bunch of snow, and we'll go in the hole, and so. It's a great group. We're really psyched to be part of it. It's a great school.
Yes.
You haven't seen the roof.
This building. I've seen the tarp over the skyline, walking in.
This building is barely holding it together.
Funny, you walk in sometimes, you're like, it's really not that bad, but you don't know, you don't know what's going on behind the scenes. It seems like they're downsizing a little, right?
Yeah.
Because the new school's smaller.
Yes.
More efficient.
Yeah, still, I mean, there was a lot of debate on the school committee about how big the makes the school. I mean, I think they could have made it, they could have made it larger and still fill it. There's all this pessimism about, you know, that the school's going to be overcrowded the day it opens. I mean, because new schools are like.
Coming to school.
It's like, okay.
And that road to school, that, I guess, you know, I've gotten the call, somebody needs to find some space for them to lock, or it could be the end of the job, because they're, they're just fighting.
Yeah. So, you know, but there's always an abundance of caution, and it ends up, I think you end up feeling the school's going to swallow that, because you can't really convince somebody to.
State handcuffs.
Yeah. And they're kind of feeling the same way. The state of food. But I think, you know, with some pushing, you probably could have got eight or seven victims. I don't think they have as much interest in the number. The building committee, in town, they're more, it's 150, I mean, it'd be a half and a half, but four patients.
Yeah, because you're going to do all the programs, you're not going to put in a kid fund, and, um.
He's still, he's, he's, he's still, all the basic things, it's not going to be that much. Politics.
I did Quincy, I did Quincy, both texts. I've never worked in a regional environment like that.
Yeah.
A lot of our team comes from Essex, so it's regional. A lot of challenges.
Yeah. And this was sixteen.
The last piece of the puzzle is getting us on board.
Yeah. Yeah.
Still a participant, right?
Oh, yeah.
We say.
Sixty-seven percent on the public side, voting yes.
Right.
They've already, they've already told us.
Is that right? And how many kids are there?
Fuctuates, I think now we're kind of, we had a higher forty. My son went here, he graduated in 2014.
What year is he now?
Um, he's, well, he went to record school in computer biology, he's doing computer programming, for cloud security computers. He lives in DC, but works in Washington, so his life works in DC.
So what was the, the tech, just about? Oh, what?
Yeah. Computer science stuff.
Trip has three, three copies of the contract. We need to get two back.
Just for, just one quick comment. So far, I'm extremely happy that you, the building committee, have chosen for us to work. Actually, I, I do recognize you.
I mean, what's interesting is the synergy is developed, and Gilbane was three weeks ago. The synergy is incredible. That's been incredible.
My one big question was who was on the interview team? But I know who else was, and I trust the opinions of the people who were on.
Yeah, we have a great building committee who's engaged, and they're, they're true professionals, so these people are well aware of that.
I'm like, are we, while you're still saying nice things about them? Oh, we're done.
You know something?
We are still saying good things about you in the, in August of 2019.
You were, we had problems.
Okay, Chair's report. As you may be aware, we are under the new public records law. And in your packet, there's actually a fairly good synopsis of the changes of that law. One of the things we do need to do is appoint a records access officer, and it is fairly common for the superintendent to take that post. So I'm going to move that we designate Edward Quillen, the superintendent, and his designee as records access officer, RAO, and post contact information, contact information conspicuously on our website. Any discussion on this appointment? Yes.
Only to ask, it was on the website ten days ago. I can explain why, because the deadline was January one, and so, in the absence of the vote, we're not going to.
So we're in compliance. We won't be as soon as we finish this call.
So, so is the, to designate, or are we affirming the designation or something? I don't care.
We're designating.
We're designating.
Designating, yes.
Okay. But I'm glad we were covered on the website when my question was asked.
Anticipating that some person.
That somebody might ask.
Any further discussion motion on the table? Very well then, bring it to the vote. All in favor of the motion on the table, please raise your hand. It passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Great. Is there any comment from the public today on what we've already had? Hey, public. The answer is no. A superintendent leadership goals report, Dr. Quillen.
Item one there, I think we've covered that pretty well. Item two slash four, the district targeted review report has been received. We anticipate sharing with the school committee probably next week, and we'll post it on the website as well. We've reviewed some of the key concerns that we were anticipating in there, and one of them was the integration of the school improvement plan, which is under the principal's purview with the district goals and such, and that's well on its way to being accomplished. I think it hasn't been accomplished. You have a new school improvement lead, which we shared with the school committee last month, and it aligns, so there were no real other surprises in that, but we'll turn up for your review. Under student learning, I just wanted to make the school committee aware of some upcoming reports from, obviously, on enrollment. Our soft deadline for applications is February first, so we'll have a pretty good enrollment report at that time. The development team wants to report to the school committee in March as to the progress it's had on its three buckets of work this year, and how they are utilizing the common planning time that's been instituted for every Wednesday. There's a lot of good work that they're doing, and they, you'll be, you'll be pleased to hear the progress there. We have, we are participating in the Department of Ed Special Ed Task Force, which has been a tremendous commitment of time from Michelle Roach, Bill Blake, and our sped director, Amy Faro. They completed their final training, I believe it's this week or next week, and they selected a project, and they'll be discussing with the school committee and having, getting some feedback. We're also, under the special ed, we reviewed today with the executive team, the training that the entire staff is going through, and assessment that we're doing beginning this year, and we'll be doing annually, on the level of risk that students present in regards to suicide. Very serious topic, some training that we've had, but we're instituting it on an annual basis, and assessing every student annually in accord with a process and a procedure that we'll be sharing with you at that time as well. Letters are going home to parents in the next week or so, on that process. I heard from Acton Boxborough that the school committee did approve the intermunicipal agreement last week, I believe.
Oh, the last week.
Yeah. Just a reminder, this intermunicipal agreement is in regards to the middle school program, and we gave that to you a few months ago, I believe, but it's up to the school committee to let me take action on that this evening. Was it in the current packet, or is it, it is still in?
Yeah.
I'm going to approve the IGA with A.V.A., presented version four twelve, draft 1016.
Sorry. Discussion, Karen.
I just want to remind people that we did talk about this when we saw it, and it was on the recommendation largely from, that, from Pam, that she would be more comfortable if Acton Boxborough had voted on it before she told me.
Have there been any changes in the agreement since the last time we looked at it?
The changes were minor.
And A.V.A.?
And I think you have all the changes.
What we see is what the changes are.
Further discussion on the motion on the table? Very well then, bring it to the vote. All in favor of the motion on the table, please raise your hand. It passes unanimously.
The guys are not giving me any work tonight.
Okay. Probably. We have two extra days to come to build.
Oh, okay.
Is that the end of your report?
Yes, sir.
Assistant Superintendent Report. Kevin Mahoney, you're on again after all the excitement earlier.
Thank you. Chairperson Lee, outside of A, seeking approval of the FY18 budget preliminary assessments, requiring two votes. To be willing to pass the budget, the school committee is required to vote sixty-six point seven percent of weighted vote of the entire school committee. I don't know if we've reached that threshold tonight, so if not.
We are, we are laughing that. So therefore, what we're going to have to do is, we're going to have to call a special meeting to have that vote, and the day of the special meeting is going to depend on two things. It's going to depend on the law saying when we have to do this vote by, and also when we can get a quorum of sixty-six point seven percent, which means we have to deal with who can come based on the weight of their community. So I think that, I think that we're going to need to find out the latest we can have this vote. And then Liz will have a fun job. And we're going to have to do the best that we can do. Between now and when we are a smaller school committee, we're going to have problems, especially when we require two-thirds, whether it be two-thirds of all sixteen members, or two-thirds of the entire weighted vote, it's just the nature of what it's going to be between now and July. And, right, a few comments. I'm going to start with Alex.
I mean, it's only the nature, as long as people don't come to me. That is, it's not actually written on a stone, Calvinist, you know, philosophy, that it will be this way for eternity. These people need to come to me. Sharon.
I agree, we should. However, reality is, everybody's not coming. I love pointing any fingers at anybody other than myself, but I might suggest that if, if you can note Elizabeth Lynn, it's, you know, like, we absolutely have to have X number of people show up, you know, or this is the England.
I think that the chair is going to compose a letter, send out all sixteen members. I mean, there's only so much you can do, but I'm going to try to get people to catch on the board.
Yeah, but I think, I think Sharon has a, has a point. When we know we need it, we need to make sure that we have people here. If we don't need it, that may be a different story.
Well, we always need nine, and not all members give prior notice as to when they are not going to show up. When they do get noticed, it's usually easier to deal with, two-thirds required, it's going to be a, a problem.
I'll point out, on Tuesday night, we had sixty-six point seven percent, everyone of, I mean, we had, we had sixty-six point seven percent of the total weighted vote, all of whom would have voted yes, but we did not have a forum, so it wasn't a legal meeting. We weren't, we weren't in a situation where we could take the vote. Unfortunately, Sue could not be here tonight, she's out of state with her elderly mother, and she's got twenty percent of the vote, sorry.
So I was just going to finish, I was just going to say that I know it's not always possible to know, and, you know, I hopefully won't always remember, for whatever reason I don't remember, but just if you can, if it's a time, you know, when you can, put out a little extra push, say a thing.
Right, good idea.
Thank you.
Liz.
I was just going to say, for the fourteenth, I believe, Sue is also not going to be here.
That's right, that's why we need a special, we need a special meeting, and even, and we need to know the deadline is according to the law as to how late it can happen.
And it's also an interesting sort of dichotomy here, that we need all of the current members to approve the budget, but the six towns that are departing don't need to approve their assessment, because they won't have an assessment at their town meeting. They'll get a bill for tuition instead.
It is the larger communities, the need to have hundred percent participation in the school committee. Dover doesn't have too much of a say, like, nothing, but the larger communities absolutely need to be here, and I know that the reasons that people can't be here, and I, I understand, I know the reasons, and that's fine, but going forward, I think they and their selectmen absolutely need to know that they need pretty close to a hundred percent participation on this school.
Can we change the date to February eight?
We're going to look, yeah, so we're going to have to look into the dates, and all sorts of, it's going to be, I knew, you know, I knew at the beginning of the year that there was going to be some issues between now and July. After July, it'd be easier. Yes.
I, Chris Hawke, sorry I wasn't here Tuesday, it was making that, but I got the email stressing how important it was to come tonight, and so I replied and said, New Year, I'm here. So, we're in this interim period, as we say, and perhaps for this interim period, it might be worthwhile to use a sort of coming meeting type grid. And I say that because it's not enough to say, well, we're rescheduling it to this date, it's important for us to be there. If you get.
If you get people checked off, and yes, I'll be there, that's a commitment on their part to show up, and they, I think I'm going to be more likely to be here. So we've got this window of time of, you know, five or six months. Maybe we could try something like that, so that everybody who checks off the box knows that if they show, that the others are committed to being there as well.
And we are going to move to that, but let me point out, we have some members that either don't respond at all or respond inaccurately on a regular basis. At any rate, moving on, please.
Is it possible for the larger towns, is there a legal method for natural point of backup person?
No. Great. Grad tuition.
In the vote of the committee, we recommend there will change the schedules on page 41 of your packet.
And, okay, let's put the vote on the table. And go to the second. What is the reasoning for leaving it exactly as it is to not either closing it or raising it?
I think we've seen slight decline in the enrollment in post-grad. We have some ideas on how to make some changes, what changes to that program that we want to move forward to the school committee in the spring, but while we're working on those transitional issues, I think that we're recommending that we maintain the tuition rates as they currently are.
Very good. Any other questions to motion on the table? Sharon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is that tuition regardless if the person lives in a member town or not?
If the person lives in a member town, they pay, the student who pays 50% in the member town pays 50%. The full tuition rate is charged if we don't have a.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Seeing none, bring into vote all in favor of the motion on the table, please raise your hand. It passes unanimously. Thank you.
On page 42 of your packet, you'll see a letter from the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools, providing a little history on a legal fund that we started back in fiscal year 15 with the threats of so-called NANC budget cuts to regional transportation. Along the shore, there is many regional schools including that and made a contribution of $500 to this legal fund. All of those funds were not expended. There has been some discussion recently with the, prior to the end of the calendar year about possible budget cuts due to revenue show-offs at the state budget level, and I think the Association of Regional Schools is anticipating that they may need those funds for services to protect certain school-related funding line items in the budget. So what they want to do in the interest of transparency is to have this reported at our school committee meeting and to ask for a vote to affirm the contribution of $500 so that they could maintain it for its competitive purpose.
Do we have a motion? Alice, do you have a word?
I move to affirm the contribution of $500 to NANC's legal fund and FY15 intended for possible challenge to NANC funding reductions at 2014 of this action by February 1, 2017, as requested by Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools, not applying.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, very good. Discussion. Seeing none, bring to vote all in favor of the motion on the table, passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Final item is regarding a Maslife Science Center grant of $108,172. So the documentation on the grant is included in your packet. Page 47, where you'll see the equipment budget of $100,000 that's going to be used for STEM equipment, biotechnology area. Asking for a vote to accept the grant.
Anybody who wants the money?
I'll make a motion to approve, accept the Maslife Science Center grant of $108,172 for STEM equipment and supplies.
Second.
Very good. Any discussion?
Just wondering.
Yes.
How that figure on the paper.
What you see is the equipment supplies is additionally down, some professional involvement training associated.
Thank you. Any other questions? Bring to vote all in favor of the motion on the table. It passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That the end of your report?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Colonel's full report finally, Mr. Principal Gillen, we get to talk about.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our first field trip this evening is a trip to New Orleans with our Community Service and Learning Group. It will take place from April 9th to April 15th. We have 15 students that are interested in going. Fundraising has already started, along with two chaperones, and it will be consisting of volunteering their time and effort to help rebuild New Orleans with that hurricane Matthew.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, a second.
Second.
Discussion. First of all, let me just ask the question for all three field trips at once. Do they all conform to all of the policies of the school committee administration?
Yes, sir.
Great, so specific questions for this particular field trip, Alice?
You said April 9th, and it says April change in the motion.
I have a departure date of Sunday, April 9th, and a return date of Sunday, April 15th.
Sorry. That's my fault. I apologize. I'm the advisor to the Community Service and Learning Group, and initially, we were going to leave on April 10th. I thought I had changed it. We were recommended to leave on April 9th, that Sunday, so you could settle in, because we have a meeting at 8:00 in the morning to talk about the worksite. So I bumped it up, and I apologize, I guess I didn't change anything.
No problem. It's going to be, if there's no objection, the vote will be as amended with the non. Very good. Dave Horton.
Do Jeff do the students have? Does the school have accident insurance that applies to the kids, or do they have to have their own?
The school's covered.
So the students are covered through the school?
Okay.
That's one of the things Jeff just asked.
That is correct.
Any other questions? Seeing none, to the vote, all in favor of the motion on the table, passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Is that the end of your report?
It is, thank you.
Thank you very much. Secretary's report, Dave Horton.
I move we approve the minutes of December 13, 2016, as presented.
Discussion. There were no suggested changes from the ownership, please.
I have a two extra nights.
Two extra nights, please.
Okay, who read them?
I did. All in favor of the motion on the table? It passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Subcommittee report, Feature Negotiations Subcommittee, Mr. Ford Spalding, do we have a need for an executive session?
I believe we do, so I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to purpose. Three MGLs, chapter 30A, section 21, sub A, the three, discuss strategy with respect to budget bargaining. The Men of Man Faculty Association, as an open meeting, may have detrimental effect on that bargaining position, the school committee and the chair.
And who would you?
Not return to.
Not return.
Well, yes, yes, we will.
Return to open session and possible action, and who would you like to remain?
Liz?
Oh.
I have.
Jack Dukowski.
Can you check this?
Sorry, Ed.
Pass the papers, but we actually need some things taken.
Yeah, and here's my question, because the.
Oh, in the packet? Possible vote in open session. Right, but what are we voting for? Well, you. Yes, right. So this is no longer an executive session, or we're entering this open session.
But the public session, the agenda is not saying we're going to take that vote. The packet says we're going to take that vote.
Ah, but we're going to take it anyways.
Whoa. Living on the edge.
Living on the edge.
Whoa. I'm sorry, I didn't notice that, but that's why I hadn't set up any of the votes.
If you have to vote, it gets a vote. So Ford, would you like, are we back, go back in open session now?
I don't have one.
Issue just right there.
I'll make a motion to ratify the December 9, 2016 memorandum agreement between the school committee and the Men of Man Faculty Association for a successor collective bargaining agreement for the period of July 1, 2017 to June 3, 2020.
Go to the second.
Second.
Discussion.
No.
I actually have a comment. My comment is that I do not love everything in this agreement. I never do. I am going to vote for it anyways, and there'll be another agreement in the future. This one, I don't agree with everything in it. On the whole, though, I don't think it's bad.
I have two comments, or one comment and one question. My comment is, is we must remember that the Faculty Association has voted for the contract. If we do not vote for it, we go back and negotiate the entire contract all over again. So that's the process, and that's the way it works. So we've got it ahead, but that is, that is true. And again, our subcommittee recommended that we vote in favor of it. My next, my question is, is it a majority vote based on?
As far as I know, it's a.
Facility.
There is nothing in the agreement that says this is a special vote.
Your vote counts.
So is it one for one vote?
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
I don't think so, so my vote may be.
It means stop. Ex stop, it means.
Hope you all fit some percentage in there.
We seem together. We need less.
Oh, yeah, you got to hear percentages.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
And let me.
I don't know, you could increase the way of your vote.
Excuse me, Ford, can I, can I remind you of something? Being on a school committee is not just for your vote, it's that your voice is heard.
My voice is definitely heard.
Your voice is heard, and that's usually what's important.
And on the building committee, your vote is as good as anybody else's.
Right. Is there any further discussion, motion in favor? All in favor of the motion on the table, please raise your hand, and we're going to go four, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 in favor, everybody but Belmont. Any abstentions? And no's. One no for Belmont. You can do the percentages, but it comes up and it passes.
You sure?
Quite sure.
I don't have to get mad at Jim for asking to say.
Very hard.
I am.
52.13 is the weight of the vote in favor, and 29.5, 2% less. So there you go.
Ford, I have the clapper.
You're going to send it around for us to sign?
Oh, yes, we all have to sign. Those that voted in favor, you decide. Those that voted opposed, you don't.
As that's wandering around, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Yes, we have a motion to adjourn, go to the second.
It's just evidence.
All in favor of the motion on the table to adjourn, please raise your hand. Thank you unanimously. Thank you very much. An important day for the school. Stayed aside.
You know, I just got to thank you on the building side, because, you know, I think we have a great team, I think we're moving forward. Hopefully, the schedule can change. Hopefully, we can result in some savings. Hopefully, we might be able to use some of our own, all of it. It's absolutely critical that we work as hard as we can.